Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to call this meeting to order. Thank you, 7:04. And if you can, please stand with us and repeat the pledge allegiance to the flag with us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Present.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Spivey?
Here.
Present.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes.
I'm sorry. Journal proceedings approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting, April 26, 2021.
Second. Okay, it's been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions or comments, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Next, we have communications and reports by the mayor. I just want to let the public know and everyone that's here, this is the first time we've been in this room since pre-pandemic. So we're glad to be here for this first meeting and this swearing in of our assistant interim chief and all, a little later, all the elected officials. 2020 has been a real tough year for the city as far as finances are concerned and also the number of people that we've lost through the COVID-19 pandemic. In my last newsletter, I stated that we had lost 47 people. I want to add two more people to that. We had one of our couples, the Struddles, who lives in the first ward. The wife passed away on April 27th, and Walt, the husband, passed away yesterday. So I'm asking that we keep our, keep that family in our prayers. So that brings our number from 47 to 49 in the City of Country Club Hills. So it's been a real challenging year, but we're trying to move forward and we are moving forward and hopefully 2020 will be better for all of us. I hope that everybody and everyone is taking the vaccines, vaccines serious because it does prevent deaths. Okay, at this time, we want to bring our city clerk and our chief to the front, please. Inroom chief. As they come to the front, I just want to say a couple of words about this young lady who stand before you today. She's, I believe, the first female chief in the City of Country Club Hills in the history of it, so we're proud to have her. And just a little bit about her, she graduated from Northwestern University EMT/B program in 2001. Also, she graduated from Northwestern University Paramedic Program in 2003. She received her EMS leadership instruction from the Illinois Department of Public Health in 2017. She is also the chairman of the EMT Committee at Mavis 24 and also she is an advisor on the Mavis 24 Safety Committee. She has many, many, many talents. We're so proud to have her today and welcome. And I know that you're going to do a great job as you have been over the years that you've been with the City of Country Club Hills. So the council and myself are very proud to have you tonight and be able to swear you in as the interim chief of the City of Country Club Hills. Okay?
I state your name.
I, Michelle Nollinger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will.
I will.
At all times.
At all times.
Maintain and conduct.
Maintain and conduct.
Myself in a manner.
Myself in a manner.
Befitting an employee.
Befitting an employee.
Of the City of Country Club Hills.
The City of Country Club Hills.
I further agree.
I further agree.
To abide by.
To abide by.
All of the rules.
All of the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Country Club Hills.
Of the City of Country Club Hills.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as.
My duties as.
Interim fire chief. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Real quick, I know I've talked a little out of tune, but I've been with the department 18 years. You know, walking in, I saw a lot of residents who I've seen over the years. You know, the council has always been very supportive of me, elected officials, and feel very humbled by the opportunity to lead. And I don't just say this one of the finest part of departments, not only in the south suburbs, but in Illinois, and I would even say the country, but I would also be remiss in not to thank my family. They made a lot of sacrifices over the years. And so with that, I promise to give the council, the residents, and I can say my name because they're all known right now, everything I have to the residents' safe and keeping them safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have one more?
This way in at this time. End of the meeting.
Park District.
Park District members, you want to come up?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, cut the team.
Is in the City of Country Club Hills, in the home of office, Park District. I, please state your name.
I, Jennifer Braun Dutton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
I will at all times.
I will at all times.
Maintain and conduct.
Maintain and conduct.
Myself in a manner.
Myself in a manner.
Befitting an employee of the City of Country Club Hills.
Befitting an employee of the City of Country Club Hills.
I further agree.
I further agree.
To abide by all of the rules.
To abide by all of the rules.
Regulations and ordinances.
Regulations and ordinances.
Of the City of Country Club Hills.
Of the City of Country Club Hills.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As.
As Country Club Hills Park District Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
She got some.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back.
So that completes the communications from the mayor. Next, we want to go to our city clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor. So moms love flowers. I know yesterday was Mother's Day, however, moms still love flowers and St. John's right across the street is selling flowers until May 16th, so please stop by and patronize them by picking up a couple of flowers or plants again at St. John's. Hillcrest Baptist Church, 17300 Pulaski will have their monthly food sharing program this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Their address is 17300 Pulaski, again, Hillcrest Baptist Church. The 2021-2022 business licenses have been issued and the remainder are still in process. So if you have any businesses that you're speaking with and you have any questions or concerns, again, the licenses are currently being issued. Last item, the city council's summer meeting schedule is on the table. I've also given one to all of the elected officials for the 2021 summer schedule. End of report.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the finance committee report. Alderman Lockett is the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval. I need a motion for a public hearing for fiscal year 2021-2022 budget.
Okay, it's been properly motioned, second. Any questions, comments? If not, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
At this time, we're open the floor to the public. If anyone have any questions or concerns about the 2021-22 budget.
Okay, hearing none. Close the floor to the public.
At this time, we'll close the floor to the public.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
At this time, we're open the floor to the public. If anyone have any questions or concerns about the 2021-22 budget.
Okay, hearing none. Close the floor to the public.
At this time, we'll close the floor to the public.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. End of my report.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Next report, we have law and ordinance.
I'd like to seek a motion for the item A. I'd like to seek a motion to table this matter for further discussion.
Second. Okay, it's been properly motioned, second. There's no questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right.
Let's see, end of my report.
End of your report. Thank you very much. City manager, can you come up for a second? Okay, sorry for the interruption. Next, we have on the agenda tonight, we have public works and utilities. Alderman Davis is the chairman.
No report at this time, Mayor.
Okay, next, we have economic development, planning zoning. Alderman Spivey is the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to announce the shred day, June 12th, for Saturday, 10:00 a.m., 1:00 p.m. over at the outdoor theater, Country Club Hills. That will be June 12th, Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And if, if we could get that into the newsletter, I mean, for the water bill next time around, so that way the city know. End of my report.
Okay. June 12th.
June 12.
Okay. All right. Next, we have Alderwoman Evans, insurance risk management. Chairman?
No report at this time.
All right.
Motion, open the floor to the public?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned, and second. Are there any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, approval of vouchers in amount of $758,875.39. A second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Questions, any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. End of my report.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Next report, we have law and ordinance.
I'd like to seek a motion for the item A. I'd like to seek a motion to table this matter for further discussion.
Second. Okay, it's been properly motioned, second. There's no questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. End of your report. Thank you very much. City manager, can you come up for a second? Okay, sorry for the interruption. Next, we have on the agenda tonight, we have public works and utilities. Alderman Davis is the chairman.
No report at this time, Mayor.
Okay, next, we have economic development, planning zoning. Alderman Spivey is the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to announce the shred day, June 12th, for Saturday, 10:00 a.m., 1:00 p.m. over at the outdoor theater, Country Club Hills. That will be June 12th, Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And if, if we could get that into the newsletter, I mean, for the water bill next time around, so that way the city know. End of my report.
Okay. June 12th.
June 12.
Okay. All right. Next, we have Alderwoman Evans, insurance risk management. Chairman?
No report at this time.
All right.
Motion, open the floor to the public?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned, and second. Are there any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
All right, public, if you have anything you would like to address to the council, please do so at this time. Step up to the mic, give us your name.
No public. Motion, close the floor to the public?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned, and second. All those, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is the all the matters reports, starting with Alderman Davis. Anything tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to add, we lost another resident, actually would be number 50.
Wow.
Louis Hobson. He was married to Carol Hobson, 22-year resident. They were married for 50 years and they will live on 190th and Nightingale. Services will be around the 22nd. I'll, I'll have the details later.
Okay, thank you.
Real good, long-term resident, unfortunately fell ill. Just keep the family in your prayers.
Wow.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett?
I'd just like to inform, and these two are not COVID-related deaths, but we did lose Victor Watts, who's a former employee here of Country Club Hills, lost his grandson to senseless crime, 167th and Pulaski, the BP gas station, yesterday. And also, my great friend, like a father to me, Mr. Robert James, lost his son to a senseless crime in Homewood, Saturday, May 8th. So I just want us all to keep these families in your, in their prayers and, and just pray for the families. End of my report.
Thank you.
Oh, and if I can mention one more thing. For those of you who attended the concert on Saturday, or for those who you didn't attend, you missed a very great show. It was a very, very nice show. A lot of people, even though it was cold, but it was a great show and looking forward to seeing them again to perform here July 4th. Thank you, end of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Gillespie?
Yes, first, I would like to thank the resident of the first ward and the City of Country Club Hills for the opportunity to represent you for a total of eight-plus years as Alderman. I have learned and experienced a lot. It is time to move forward. Also, we must get behind the Alderman-elect John Edwards, giving him an opportunity to give you the representation that is needed to keep our city safe, economically viable. And also, I would like to thank the mayor for your support over the years and the Alderman. It has been a pleasure in working with you, all of you all. And, and, you know, we, hopefully we can move on and move forward and, you know, make this city a better city. And that's the end of my report. Thanks again for your time and thanks for, for letting me serve you.
If I may, Mayor, if I could be recognized. Mr. Gillespie, I think you gave your last eight years, but you actually had total amount of?
16.
16 years of service. Thank you.
Yes.
As an Alderman.
Yes. It's a long time. Alderwoman Evans?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I just want to remind folks that we're, we're still in COVID times and as my colleagues have mentioned, there are folks still passing, still getting ill, so let's just continue. I know it seems like we're, you know, things are opening back up slowly and, you know, there's a little more movement involved, but we still need to try to get our loved ones vaccinated. I did hear on the news today that most locations, most people are within three point, point places of a vaccination location now, so I want to just remind folks to continue to do that. The age group for 12 to 17 is open up, so they can, they now can get vaccinated as well. Let's get them vaccinated so we can get them back to school, please. I have one that needs to get it back to school, too. They all got to get back to school. So, so let's just continue to monitor this. We're not out of the clear yet. I'm pushing as much as everybody wants to be maskless and get back to their normal way of living as far as visiting families and having parties and things of that nature, but we have to respect that we are still not out of the woods. So that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Spivey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate the shred day, June 12th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Country Club Hills Theater. Also, as Alderwoman just stated, that we would like everybody to be safe and make sure that you wear your mask and get vaccinated. I think that's the most important thing in order to move the city forward. Also, I want to thank Alderman Gillespie for his years of service here in Country Club Hills. It's been a pleasure serving with you. I wish you well, you and your family, and if I need to call on you, please answer the phone. End of my report.
Okay. I think we got everybody, okay? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask, do we have, we don't have a photographer, do we? Did he go downstairs? Okay. Alderman Gillespie, if you can go down to the front, please.
Okay.
He's taking all of his stuff, looks like he's prepared to leave us.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I could be recognized again before we get started, I just want to recognize that we have our state rep in the, in the, here at the meeting, Debbie Myers-Martin from 38th District.
And also, Mayor, before you do it, Congresswoman Kelly is in the doorway there. Can we have her to come in?
We want to recognize her downstairs.
Okay, okay, that sounds good.
I want her downstairs.
Right. Okay, sounds good.
19 years? Did I hear that? 16. 16 years? Yes. At this time, you know, we truly appreciate the 16 years that Gillespie has given to the City of Country Club Hills. As I recall, the last?
Eight years?
Yes. That he did not miss a meeting?
No.
A council meeting. He was here perfect attendance, never missed a council meeting. So to me, that is tremendous. And I want to comment him on that, compliment you on that idea that you were always here. So he cared enough to be here for all of the meetings. So in appreciation, Eddie Gillespie, for your service to the City of Country Club Hills and the residents of the first ward, Mayor James Ford, and the City of Country Club Hills and the city council, I'd like to congratulate you and present you with this flag.
Thank you.
Three, two, one. Thank you. Okay. He was right.
Okay, before we close this meeting, I would like to ask everyone to, the council, to allow us to move everyone downstairs without closing the meeting because we, we still will be in the meeting as we, as we swear in the other elected officials. So we'll take a brief recess and just move downstairs and continue, and we'll close the meeting out down there at the end.
Cool.
Okay? So all the guests, if you can please go downstairs with us, we greatly appreciate it.
My name is Carl Stell. I'm the city administrator for Country Club Hills. First of all, I'd like to thank and congratulate every Alder person that's here today. If you could all give them a round of applause, please. We'd also like to thank every friend, relative, neighbor, every supporter, and especially every resident that took time out of their business schedule to come here today and be part of the ceremony. We'd also like to specially thank Congresswoman Robin Kelly for being here today. State Representative Debbie Myers-Martin. We have several honorable judges here tonight. We have Judge House. Justice. Justice. I apologize. We have Judge Studley. And we have Judge Jackson. Tonight, what we'll do is we're going to call up each Alder person numerically from their ward. They'll be sworn in. After the swearing in of all Alder persons, what we will do is we will proceed, after it's adjourned by the mayor, this meeting, we will proceed.
Motion open the floor to the public.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motion and second. Are there any questions? If not, roll call please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
All right, public, if you have anything you would like to address to the council, please do so at this time. Step up to the mic, give us your name.
No public. Motion close the floor to the public?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motion and second. All those, I'm sorry. Roll call please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillespie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
All right. Our next on the agenda is the automatic reports. Starting with Alderman Davis, anything tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to add, we lost another resident, actually would be number 50.
Wow.
Louis Hobson. He was married to Carol Hobson, 22-year resident. They were married for 50 years and they will live on 190th and Nightingale. Services will be around the 22nd. I'll have the details later.
Okay, thank you.
Real good, long-term resident, unfortunately ill. Just keep the family in your prayers.
Wow.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, I'd just like to inform, and these two are not COVID-related deaths, but we did lose Victor Watts, who's a former employee here of Country Club Hills, lost his grandson to senseless crime, 167th and Pulaski, the BP gas station yesterday. And also, my great friend, like a father to me, Mr. Robert James, lost his son to a senseless crime in Homewood, Saturday, May 8th. So, I just want us all to keep these families in your, in their prayers and just pray for the families. End of my report.
Thank you.
Oh, and if I can mention one more thing. For those of you who attended the concert on Saturday, or for those who you didn't attend, you missed a very great show. It was a very, very nice show. A lot of people, even though it was cold, but it was a great show. And looking forward to seeing them again to perform here, July 4th. Thank you, end of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Gillespie?
Yes, first, I would like to thank the resident of the First Ward and the city of Country Club Hills for the opportunity to represent you for a total of eight-plus years as alderman. I have learned and experienced a lot. It is time to move forward. Also, we must get behind the alderman-elect John Edwards, giving him an opportunity to give you the representation that is needed to keep our city safe, economically viable. And also, I would like to thank the mayor for your support over the years. And the aldermen, it has been a pleasure in working with you, all of you all. And, you know, we, hopefully, we can move on and move forward and, you know, make this city a better city. And that's the end of my report. Thanks again for your time and thanks for letting me serve you.
If I may, Mayor, if I could be recognized. Mr. Gillespie, I think you gave your last eight years, but you actually had total amount of
Sixteen.
Sixteen years of service. Thank you.
Yes.
As alderman.
Yes.
It's a long time. Alderwoman Evans?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I just want to remind folks that we're, we're still in COVID times and as my colleagues have mentioned, there are folks still passing, still getting ill, so let's just continue. I know it seems like we're, you know, things are opening back up slowly and, you know, there's a little more movement involved, but we still need to try to get our loved ones vaccinated. I did hear on the news today that most locations, most people are within three point, point places of a vaccination location now. So, I want to just remind folks to continue to do that. The age group for 12 to 17 is open up, so they can, they now can get vaccinated as well. Let's get them vaccinated so we can get them back to school, please. I have one that needs to get it back to school, too. They all got to get back to school. So, so let's just continue to monitor this. We're not out of the clear yet. I'm pushing as much as everybody wants to be maskless and get back to their normal way of living as far as visiting families and having parties and things of that nature, but we have to respect that we are still not out of the woods. So, that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Spivey.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to reiterate the Shred Day, June 12th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Country Club Hills Theater. Also, as Alderwoman just stated, that we would like everybody to be safe and make sure that you wear your mask and get vaccinated. I think that's the most important thing in order to move the city forward. Also, I want to thank Alderman Gillespie for his years of service here in Country Club Hills. It's been a pleasure serving with you. I wish you well, you and your family. And if I need to call on you, please answer the phone. End of my report.
Okay. I think we got everybody, okay? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask, do we have, we don't have a photographer, do we? Do they go downstairs? Eric. Okay. Alderman Gillespie, if you can go down to the front, please.
Okay.
He's taking all of his stuff. Looks like he's prepared to leave us.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I could be recognized again before we get started, I just want to recognize that we have our state rep in the, in the, here at the meeting, Debbie Myers-Martin from 38th District.
And also, Mayor, before you do it, Congresswoman Kelly is in the doorway there. Can we have her to come in? Okay, okay, that sounds good.
Downstairs.
Right. Okay, sounds good.
Nineteen years?
Nineteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen years?
Yes.
At this time, you know, we truly appreciate the sixteen years that Gillespie has given to the city of Country Club Hills. As I recall, the last
Eight years?
Yes. And he did not miss a meeting?
No.
A council meeting. He was here perfect attendance. Never missed a council meeting, so to me, that is tremendous. And I want to comment him on that. Compliment you on that idea that you're always here. So, he cared enough to be here for all of the meetings. So, in appreciation, Eddie Gillespie, for your service to the city of Country Club Hills and the residents of the First Ward, Mayor James Ford, and the city of Country Club Hills and the city council, I would like to congratulate you and present you with this flag.
Thank you.
Three, two, one, one more? Three, two.
Thank you.
You was right.
Okay, before we close this meeting, I would like to ask everyone to, the council, to allow us to move everyone downstairs without closing the meeting because we, we still will be in the meeting as we, as we swear in the other elected officials. So, we'll take a brief recess and just move downstairs and continue. And we'll close the meeting out down there at the end.
Cool.
Okay? So, all the guests, if you can please go downstairs with us, we greatly appreciate it.
My name is Carl Stell. I'm the city administrator for Country Club Hills. First of all, I'd like to thank and congratulate every alderperson that's here today. If you could all give them a round of applause, please. We'd also like to thank every friend, relative, neighbor, every supporter, and especially every resident who took time out of their business schedule to come here today and be part of the ceremony. We'd also like to specially thank Congresswoman Robin Kelly for being here today. State Representative Debbie Myers-Martin. We have several honorable judges here tonight. We have Judge House.
Justice.
Justice. I apologize. We have Judge Studley. And we have Judge Jackson. Tonight, what we'll do is we're going to call up each alderperson numerically from their ward. They'll be sworn in. After the swearing-in of all alderpersons, what we will do is we will proceed, after it's adjourned by the mayor, this meeting, we will proceed upstairs individually. Eric Booker will select each alderperson in your select group to go upstairs and take individual pictures upstairs with your group. Mayor Ford would also come up following that so you all can take pictures with all elected officials. Okay? Having that in mind, let's get started. We'll start off with Ward 1. And that'll be John Edwards.
F.I., state your name. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. John Edwards.
Haven't been elected?
Haven't been elected.
To the office of Alderman of the First Ward?
To the office of Alderman of the First Ward.
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois?
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois.
And being solemnly sworn upon oath?
Being solemnly sworn upon oath?
Promise to support?
Promise to support?
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois?
Of the state of Illinois.
And to faithfully discharge?
And to faithfully discharge?
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of Alderman of the First Ward in Country Club Hills, Illinois?
Alderman, of Alderman of the First Ward, Country Club Hills, Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Ward 2, Mr. Vincent Lockett.
Aye?
Vincent E. Lockett.
Haven't been elected?
Haven't been elected.
To the office?
The office.
Of Alderman of the Second Ward?
Alderman of the Second Ward.
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois?
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois.
And being solemnly sworn upon oath?
And being solemnly sworn upon oath?
Promise to support?
Promise to support?
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois?
The state of Illinois.
And to faithfully discharge?
And to faithfully discharge?
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of Alderman of the Second Ward?
Alderman of the Second Ward.
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois?
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. So help me God.
Ward 3, Mrs. Lisa Evans.
Aye?
Aye, Lisa Evans. Lisa L. Evans.
Haven't been elected?
Haven't been elected.
To the office?
To the office.
Of Alderwoman of the Third Ward?
Of Alderwoman of the Third Ward.
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois?
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois.
And being solemnly sworn upon oath?
And being solemnly sworn upon oath?
Promise to support?
Promise to support?
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America?
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois?
Of the state of Illinois.
And to faithfully discharge?
And to faithfully discharge?
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Alderwoman of the Second Ward?
Alderwoman of the Third?
Third Ward!
Everybody didn't weigh my job.
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois?
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'll stay here. I got to get them on.
Ward 4, Mr. Ricardo Spivey.
Are you prepared to take the oath?
Yes, sir.
Please face your right hand and repeat out of me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Ricardo D. Spivey.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold, protect, and defend?
That I will uphold, protect, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
I will at all times maintain?
I will at all times maintain?
And conduct myself in a manner?
And conduct myself in a manner?
Befitting and employee of the city of Country Club Hills?
Befitting and employee and the city of Country Club Hills?
I further agree to abide?
I further agree to abide?
By all the rules, regulations, and ordinances?
By all the rules, regulations, and ordinances?
Of the city of Country Club Hills?
And the city of Country Club Hills.
I will faithfully discharge my duties as alderman of the Fourth Ward?
I will faithfully discharge my duties of the alderman of the Fourth Ward?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Alderman.
Thank you.
Ward 5, Mr. Anthony Davis.
Aye?
Aye. Anthony J. Davis.
Haven't been elected?
Haven't been elected.
To the office?
To the office.
Of Alderman of the Fifth Ward?
Of Alderman of the Fifth Ward.
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois?
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois.
And being solemnly sworn upon oath?
And being solemnly sworn upon oath?
Promise to support?
Promise to support?
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois?
Of the state of Illinois.
And to faithfully discharge?
And to faithfully discharge?
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of Alderman of the Fifth Ward?
Of Alderman of the Fifth Ward.
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois?
In the city of Country Club Hills, Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Amen.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, for being here with us tonight. We have someone special. I know it's impromptu, but I'm going to call on them anyway. This young lady, Congresswoman Robin Kelly, has done so much for the Southland, so much for the city of Country Club Hills, that I can't begin to count the amount of money that she has enabled us to get in the Southland. She represents us well in Washington. And we appreciate the services that she renders on a daily basis because I know being in Washington, dealing with those other people, is very difficult, okay? And so, I really would like for her to give a few words tonight. She's special to the Southland, she's special to the city of Country Club Hills. And not only that, she is now the chair of the Illinois Democratic Party. Is that right? All right. Robin Kelly.
I'd like your mayor, so I won't kill him. I wanted to say congratulations to all the aldermen and alderwomen being sworn in. It's not easy to be a leader, it's not easy to stick your neck out, you know, because you know, there's a chance every day you might be making someone happy, but at the same time, someone not happy because of a decision you decided to make. So, thank you for stepping out to be leaders. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for all of your support of me. I appreciate you so much. Yes, we brought money in the Country Club Hills, but we hope to bring more money because we know that cities and states and individuals and families have really suffered because of COVID. So, on the federal level, we've tried to send money back to the state, the county, and the cities and towns so that you can not only survive, but thrive and help your businesses and, and families and whatever you need. So, now we're working on the, we did the American Rescue Plan, but now we're working on the American Jobs Plan. So, we hope to bring infrastructure money back and not just for roads, bridges, and tunnels, and water like you normally think of, but also human infrastructure to make us whole again. Broadband, because so many places, my district is urban, suburban, and rural, and I have parts of my district where people can't go online because they just don't have the infrastructure. So, we're working, you know, around that, too, but we're also trying to do more as far as healthcare, more as far as healthcare equity. You see what happened with COVID. It was people of color. That was so affected. So many people died, so we're trying to do better in that arena also. But I love my district, I love serving, I'm proud to serve, 2nd congressional district, I'm proud to serve with Debbie Myers-Martin and work together with her because we're all better when we're working together and working toward one goal. So, thank you so much. And I have to give my little speech. Government can't do it alone. So, if you haven't gotten your shot, I got my shot in January. I'm still okay. My husband has his shot and he's still okay. We cannot do it alone. We need everybody when it's your turn and when you can take advantage. And now, thanks to, you know, the federal government and the state in Cook County, you should be able to get your shot without a problem. So, please, please take advantage. Thank you so much.
Well, with that said, I would be awed if I didn't give our state rep an opportunity to say hi to everyone, so please, come on up.
Well, thank you, Mayor Ford, for introducing me and allowing me to speak. And certainly, congratulations to all the aldermen and alderwomen because the transition of power, especially locally, is so important. I used to be a mayor and local government is definitely boots on the ground. People who live in your ward, in your municipality, in your city, in your town, they count on you every single day. You affect their lives every single day. And that is a huge responsibility that I know that you don't take lightly. I know that you realize that the people who you serve count on you every single day. And so, I am so proud to be here representing the 38th District, of which Country Club Hills is one of my municipalities. And I'm happy to say that I'm a member of the Illinois Legislative Black Caucus and I have been appointed as the liaison to all of the African-American mayors in the state of Illinois. So, I will be working closely with Mayor Ford and the other mayors to make sure that we in Springfield understand the challenges that you face as mayors in local government. Because there's not a lot of former mayors in Springfield and they don't understand. They don't realize the challenges that we face, especially here in the Southland. It is so important that we speak up and we never let them forget that we are a region that deserves respect and we deserve to have our place at the table. And I am so happy to have the opportunity to be one of those voices that talk about the Southland. I've lived in the Southland for over a long time. And I used to live in Country Club Hills. And so, I always have a soft place in my heart for this town. I remember girls' softball when it was a big deal. And my daughters grew up on that, so, and they talk about that all the time with their friends. Because that is important to have community, to have community spirit, to have people appreciate where they live, that this is a small town. And you can talk to the mayor, you can see the mayor in the grocery store, you can see your aldermen and alderwomen. So, I am, again, very thankful, very appreciative. I appreciate Mayor Ford's support and all of the people that live in Country Club Hills over the years. I appreciate the aldermen who include me and invite me to participate because I love community events. I love having the opportunity to speak with people. And let me just say, before I leave, come to Springfield. Advocate for things that are important to you. We welcome you to come down because we're now just beginning to open up. We just got back into the chamber like you here in Country Club Hills. So, please, join us, speak up, let us hear your voices. In Springfield, there were over 4,000 bills filed this session alone. It's impossible to know all of that legislation unless there's legislation that is important to you. Then call, email, write, come to Springfield because we welcome, we welcome your input. I count on that input. So, thank you again, Mayor, for allowing us.
As you can see, we are well represented, not only in Washington, but in Springfield as well. So, once again, Justice House, thank you for being here. Judge Studley, Attorney Studley, Judge Jackson, we appreciate you. Thank you for being a resident of Country Club Hills. We love it. I have some good people that I can call on at any time, so it makes me feel proud to be able to represent you as your mayor. So, with that said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion for adjournment?
Second.
It's been properly motion and second. Are there any questions? Here are no questions. Roll call.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alderwoman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Spivey?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you all. Let's have some refreshments and socialize and enjoy each other.